Open the meeting at five o'clock by the clock on the TV.
It's closed.
And we have some signing to do, accounts payable manifest in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand fifteen dollars and six cents.
Move it second. There is a school paper, everything.
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't tell you that would be the answer.
Yeah.
Please feel wondering. I'm just gonna aim for it.
Want my glasses? Oh, wait a minute.
You've got some, don't you?
I've got some here.
One seventy-five is what I really use.
Well, you'll have to deal with what I got, and if you see too much, then.
You got some rhinestones on there, or?
No, if you see too much, close one eye.
Just remember missing, that's why we should discover it.
And then we have a payroll manifest in the amount of forty-five thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars twenty-six cents.
So move.
And second.
Sound almost like the same number we just had.
Yeah, no, it's close. Do we, do we have to bolt on the welfare manifest?
No. Oh, yes, you do, you should, yeah, it's a welfare manifest.
And a wel- welfare manifest in the amount of fourteen hundred dollars.
So move, and second.
Is this all the money it's left, or?
Um, it should be. And did somebody sign the check that was with the manifest? Oh, well, when it comes back, okay.
I just need one place to sign, keep that back to Cheryl.
And then we have a Boswood intermunicipal agreement update.
Yes. I met with the head administrator and planning head for Boswood. We had an intermunicipal agreement with them for the whole inspector. And they're, they're changing their system. So the only thing we changed in there was that the previous one said that there was no cost. And so we did change it to the personnel cost of wages. So if he comes over here, we'll pay him, but it's per inspection, that's what they, they charge, say sixty-five dollars per inspection, or sixty dollars inspection. So we agreed there'd be a flat rate. So Joel goes over there and does two inspections, it's a hundred and twenty bucks. If Chuck comes over here, it's gonna be, we'll, we'll send him a hundred and twenty bucks.
Yep, yep.
So it'll be just a flat rate.
Yep.
That was the only change in there.
Yeah. These guys have got the same qualifications, do they?
Yes, yep.
There's only one signature on it?
Uh, yes, there was only one, on the original one, so I just changed that one line there.
What are the qualifications, and fine inspector one? Just curious.
No, it's... There is a building inspector.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
There is a building inspector, 'cause Joel went to school for that.
Yeah, I thought everybody.
'Cause when he took the job here, he was almost, was school.
Yeah.
And when he got done, that's, became official as a building inspector, yeah. That was four thirty-two or five thirty-two?
Five thirty-two.
Five thirty-two.
Well, you should know the answer.
Yeah, that's where I live.
Did you hit that coming out?
Yeah.
Well, that's why, yeah.
My car, my car's a little low, I didn't realize Mom had contacted.
So. Putting one together.
We have different last names.
Well, yeah, I know, but, yeah. But, you know, venue right, that's just.
I mean, my car's gonna be happy to knock in.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Do you need any helps?
No, too. Why do you want to? That looks good to me.
Yeah. You read the minutes?
Yes, I have read the minutes.
You're seeing any?
I did not.
I didn't either.
Probably won't find any myself. Never hurts to have another eye.
I saw this. Okay. I figured it was spam, but if you wanted it. You had under the radar, 'cause they'll point you for something.
Enough to look at that roof, or? My library?
Uh, Wednesday morning.
Okay. You need me up there, or?
Hmm?
Do I need to be there, or? Okay.
Of course you wanna be, I'll, I'll be there.
I'm gonna take a truck, you can get tires.
Actually, I got a truck that needs tires.
Oh. Wanna, wanna meet up?
Yeah, I was gonna say. I did give you a discount.
They should have, through all the money I've spent here this year.
Go to, what is it, Town Hall, on Martinburg? We get a really good deal, well, they supply houses and.
These are just free tires on Swabbin.
Oh, they're free?
Yeah.
Better deal than I got.
Town, Town Hall, treats us really.
For a while.
Yeah, they're really, really.
Town Hall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm on the cheap list this year.
Hmm.
We were two, and mine ended up being really reasonable, right, right off there. Others sold around sixteen hundred and maybe about eight. Well, who the fuck. Has to have big tires for some reason.
I don't know.
They don't go mine, or anything. Mine too.
So the grader is non-functional, requires a replacement computer. See if it's here, okay.
That was before that update.
Yeah. Looking forward to that.
I'll give you an update here in a couple minutes.
We get some sort of a discount on these things, or? 'Cause we're municipal.
On what?
On what?
From the price of the... Uh, Jeff seems to imply that there's a municipal rate that we would be.
For equipment?
Yeah.
I think it depends on what we get, and from who.
Yeah. That's, that's what we normally say.
Could you just calm down a little bit? Nice job. Hello, good to meet.
Definitely. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Go one favor.
Aye. We want to do business?
Yeah.
So I got a call from Mike Tersey at school.
Yeah.
Usually they ask at the select and meet with them this time of year. So he extended invitation to you guys to go to the school board meeting on the twenty-fourth of October. It's a, it's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
At Kevary Elementary School at six thirty.
Okay. Twenty-four October.
Yep.
What time?
Six thirty.
Yeah.
At CES.
I do remember going up to that last year.
Get the sitting short chains.
Yeah. I like my knees up around my ears.
Six thirty. And they usually discuss budget, upcoming budget, any major projects going on at school.
And I don't know when the next.
Withdrawal meetings?
Yeah, probably before that.
Well, it was last week, I know that.
Well, one was, but they're gonna have another one.
Of course.
For old business, Shakeroe Mailboxes, I sent you an email that I talked with the postmaster up in Tilton.
Yep.
And they were agreeable to custom boxes. I sent that to Joanna. She said that that, that was always on the table, apparently, which I didn't realize.
But she said they, they didn't want those, did they?
Residents didn't want them because they'd have to have keys and the cost. And so I saw the phone with Joanna, and I had kind of linked to mail, those custom mailboxes.
Yep.
And I said, "Well, the number of mailboxes you need and the cost, if you divide it by how many, it's two hundred and thirty-four dollars apiece." So I would think that small price to pay to have a mailbox in a safe location.
I would think so, too.
She said the majority of the people feel that way, but it only takes one person to say, "No, I don't wanna do it." And the mailbox, the post office said, either they all move over there, or none of them move over there. So the postmaster said that they could do a site visit. I'm not sure what that would get us, 'cause there really isn't any place to line up. Thirty-five mailboxes on Old Gilmanton Road.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know what you guys wanna do.
Don't we go out and talk to them, or?
Can I arrange a, a site visit with, with the post office and Joanna and you guys, or one of you, or whatever?
I think that might be a good way to do it.
At least to talk it over.
Yeah, 'cause honestly, the postmaster may have ideas.
Yeah. She said that wherever they go, they cannot back up.
Understood, yeah, and that makes perfect sense, yeah. So do you suppose anywhere on that triangle is all right, or are we gonna have to stick to some part of it?
Well, there's room for the custom mailboxes in the triangle without having to back up. But not for thirty-five mailboxes.
Should we be putting in half a dozen extra, because it's gonna grow up there, or do we just ignore it?
Well, I think the number is, I think they have thirty-two or thirty-three mailboxes there.
Yeah.
So she said, you know, I said, "Well, the custom mailboxes, if you look, they come at, oh, they, you get them at sixteen each or something, so."
Yeah.
We'd have some extras, and you can buy smaller ones or bigger ones, and they're all within the ballpark of, of the number that, that I figured, so.
Yeah.
And when I explained to Joanna, I said, "Well, Joanna," I said, "the town was gonna spend quite a bit of money." I said, "But time is short, we didn't have a truck and everything, or piece of equipment." I said, "I don't know how the rest of the town feels about the town spending all that money up there." And now we have an opportunity to solve a problem for a couple hundred bucks apiece.
Right.
From the residents, I said, "I, I, I said, I would think, if it was me, I would jump at it."
Yep.
But she said, "Yeah, well, but that's not how everybody feels."
Yes.
"I don't know how we can help you."
So how much is it a piece?
Two hundred and thirty-four dollars, or two hundred and thirty-two dollars, or something like that is what I figured, so.
Doesn't sound too bad to me.
I agree, I, I think that. If you buy a brand-new mailbox at Home Depot, not the cheapest one they have, it's fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And that's just the box, that's not a poster or anything, that's just the box. So, like, well, I don't know.
The other thing she, I know she was talking when I was up at that barbecue the other day, and, um... I just, people are stealing boxes and shit that's been left underneath the box up there.
There's all the more reason to need a lockbox, to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, they gotta have a box to get something in it.
Yeah, and they, they have, the ones that I looked at have, I don't know, they're, they're fairly sizable mailboxes.
I thought they were tossing around to some kind of big, no, not.
And they do have, they have them that have, like, three or four big compartments also. So my guess is that if you were somebody that gets a whole bunch of big packages, you'd probably wanna get a big, a big mailbox. Or, I don't know if they have, if that's something you can say, "Well, deliver it to mailbox number forty." And that's the big mailbox, and everybody has a key to number forty.
Yep.
Something, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works, but, I mean, I think that would be something that would be reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it seems to me as though we've identified a solution for them.
Yeah.
If they choose to not take that solution.
Kind of where I am, that's kind of where I follow it.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll arrange a, a site visit.
Yeah.
I'll contact the post office on Wednesday and see if we can come up with a date and time.
I've been watching Joanna and John, her husband. They came down to the Martin Farms Market the other day, which I hadn't seen them in any of those.
Yeah.
And it's almost like they're trying to push a way into a town.
Well, it'd be nice if they were, I mean, they are part of the town.
Yeah.
Being more active and attending social events and things like that is a good idea.
Yeah, she took some pictures, I don't know if I saw them, they were in the Facebook pages.
Yeah. I'll have to look for them.
There was one with color and one with black and white.
Yeah.
So you'll let me know when you talk to her, or?
Yeah, I will, I'll let you guys know also, but, um... We did the Boswood municipal agreement.
Yeah.
Comcast contract. So I have a copy of the contract, some updated language in it, and names. You know, if you guys wanna sign it or not, um, I talked to, it was kind of interesting, I got a call from representative from Consolidated L.A. And they wanted to, uh, to have the town sponsor them to give BMGI money for... I said, "Well, we already, we signed the contract with Comcast last week."
Yeah, several weeks too late.
I said, "Well, I..."
Why do they wait, is there a reason?
I, I said, "Well," I said, "you know, we, I said, "you never answered our RFP, you told us that you were gonna, you know, seek other alternative financing." And I said, "And we haven't heard a word from you guys."
Right.
So we've been working with Comcast all along.
Yeah.
And they, they actually applied for two grants previous to this.
Yeah.
I said, "You guys never..." So we, we signed on with Comcast.
Yeah.
"Okay, well, thank you."
Ken, have you looked through that contract?
Yeah, yeah, it's a standard, it's, it's pretty much the same as what we had.
Yeah.
The density requirement is still there, however, they have made it clear that they are going to go ahead with the project, whether they get the BMGI money or not. I said, "Well, it's short time before we know whether we're getting money from, you know, if we get an award." I said, "They may wanna wait," and he said, "Okay." But I said, "Well, I'll give it to you guys and let you make a decision one way or the other." And if you choose to wait, again, it's not that much longer before we have some kind of notification on what the awards are.
So I drove out there yesterday, I haven't been out to Harmony Lane for a while. The, um, they haven't done any work on that culvert on the end, just FYI. I thought that was gonna be done this summer, but.
Okay.
So you still can't get through the road between the two ends, right? The road comes to, I don't know, a mile on this side, two miles or something on this side, and there's a house.
Yep.
Ain't the middle of the road.
Yep.
And so.
Did you wanna read this?
I'd like to look at it, yeah.
Is that, is that gonna be included on this, the Harmony Lane folks, or?
All of the houses, all the residents, we've got.
Identified.
Right. He, he sent us a list that they have. I have the list, the original list from last year. He sent us an updated list. We, Mandy worked and compared both lists and found twenty-five houses that weren't on there. And that's, that's the number he kind of floated here, that there was twenty-five or twenty-six houses that he didn't think was on their new list. And we confirmed that. Once we get the new updated FCC map for mission broadband, we'll compare that list, and we'll send that to Comcast, and they will include all of those on both, on all three lists, to make sure we have all the residents covered, so.
So if it turns out in the end we missed some, can we still pick them up, or? I don't wanna enter into some.
Yeah, it depends on where it is. If it's, if they're stringing cable past somebody's house.
Yeah.
Then it's available.
Yeah.
If it's a house at the end of a dead-end road, and they, for whatever reason, that house wasn't on the list somehow, then it would be the cost of whatever it is for the last termination to that resident. But he's, I think, between, between them, the FCC, Mandy, and myself, looking at everything, between the tax maps and all, so there's three of us that are combining forces here to make sure that every residence gets taken care of.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what else to do.
Okay, I just.
I don't know, I don't know how else to make sure you get a hundred percent. There's three different people working on it, so I would hope that, that, that we get it all taken care of. If you wanna join in and look at all the, look at the spreadsheets with us, you're more than welcome to.
I didn't say that.
Well, you seem to be.
No, I just wanna make sure we don't.
Okay.
I don't want to be in this position again, having to explain to people we.
I understand, and, but I mean, you can only do what you can do, and.
Yeah.
That's, you know, we're doing our best.
All right.
I think they spent hundreds of dollars on it.
If, if you have questions about our work, then please help us out.
You know, better.
They've put a lot of hours into it over the last two or three years, all of them.
So anyway, I, it's up to you guys what you do with this contract. I, it's not gonna hurt to wait two months, I, nothing's gonna change. We've been without a contract for five years, six years, seven years.
A lo-, yeah, at least, just every.
One more pen finish?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, once again, I'm, I'm stuck at the density clause.
Yeah.
Twenty dwelling units per aerial mile and thirty dwelling units per underground mile.
And that was the problem in the.
And the only, I mean, the only thing that... The only thing, if, if there's some kind of new development that goes in, that would be affecting.
Right.
So if there's, if, if, even if the, the cable goes by the end of the road, and there's a new road is put in, and there's only five houses on it, or something like that, then that, I would think that would be a question.
Yep.
So that's, that would be a sticking point, and I, I don't disagree. I, I don't know, you know.
Well, doesn't seem to matter.
But that may be something that, if, if the planning board approves some kind of subdivision with multiple dwellings on it, that that may be part of the approval, that they, the contractor pays for all utilities.
Yep.
I mean, that, that would be my thought, that that's how you'd get around that. But as it stands with what we've been told, that in the near future, that every house will have access. Every existing house.
Yeah.
Right. And again, if it goes by somebody and they put in a new house and they're making a lot, or there's a subdivision and they put another house in, then they'll have access to it because of the fine.
No, that seriously was the problem for us forever, is there's not enough houses on.
Well, it's going the other way in a hurry right now, we gotta look at it.
Yeah.
All kinds of people are looking into the borough.
Yeah. Phil's traffic cop. He's doing something. Do you wanna say that?
I think Ken's advice is good.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned. Do you want to do this?
Do you, do you need a motion?
Go ahead.
No, 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 I don't need a motion on that.
Do you wanna sign it and?
If you wanna wait on it, then.
We can wait. You wanna give it some more time?
Yeah, that could hurt my feelings. Yeah, I mean, so the density clause is still in there, we, I know Brian's aware of it.
Mm-hmm.
And yet it's still there, so.
Yep.
Yeah, that, well, I'm, you and I are proud of the density clause.
Yeah.
They're all like.
But there's a lot of places in town.
And I'm running out of aluminum foil for a rabbit earsk.
He must look through with aluminum foil hanging off his ears.
Yeah, he's coming.
I got a big picture of that. All right, swing them away.
I do.
Yeah.
All right, man, I will tell them that you guys will wait until the BMGI money is granted, and we'll go from there.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Unless they're willing to give us contract with that clause excluded.
That, right.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Absolutely.
Quick grader update. Our outstanding employee, Evan Hoffman, contacted a different mechanic garage. They sent a mechanic out, um, they looked at it, spent some time on it the other day, and today, and they feel that the park may be available for seven hundred and fifty dollars. So they ordered a new park, and it's supposed to come in tomorrow. If it does, the mechanic will be out and do some work on it, and hopefully get it done. So, kudos to Evan for.
Yeah. He just wants to get out of the green grader, is what he's after.
Oh, I think, you know, he's smart enough, but he knows that there's other options besides the.
I followed him the other day when he was going down the road, and the grader would come to something and go.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you'd see it bending the whole middle of the grader road.
That's the problem, yeah.
So I will keep you updated on that, I, we keep our fingers crossed that that's, that's what's gonna happen, so.
Yeah, good.
And if it does, I'm, I told Evan today, I said, "If this works out, you're gonna get a big pat on the back from me."
From all of us.
Yeah, really.
And an update on the police department vacancy. They held a physical agility test this weekend, and none of the candidates passed.
That's discouraging. What do you have to do to fail? Running and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Have to run so far and there's only a minute, so.
Yeah, um, and I talked to the police chief today, and I think that one of the, one of the candidates had actually called ahead and said they weren't gonna come because they're gonna go to the Kong Hospital, it's thirty, thirty dollars a hour. And then, then. And then, then was, apparently it was, he talked to, oh, I don't know, it was the chief somewhere Loudon or one of the neighboring towns, and they lost an officer that went to Alton for ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus, a car, and twenty-five, twenty-eight dollars an hour or something like that. So, I think we're going to have to really look at our benefits and wages for the police if we want to always make us to be in some kind of competition with, with some of these things. And not that we need to be the highest-paid department or given the most wages, but if we want to be competitive, we've got to figure out what we can do.
Yeah, you read the adverts and the Sunday paper and whatnot, and it should...
Yeah, and we've been advertising at NHMA and the Police Academy has an advertisement. We did, uh, A.D.U.D. and a couple others. Just hasn't been, hasn't been successful.
Oh, we have like two more months to figure this mod out, or...
Well, I, yeah, I mean, the budget, we, we should have something fairly concrete by the end of the year, I hope. At least be able to advertise that.
Yeah. And certainly the other issue, certainly that I saw during the end of my career was a lack of physical fitness on the part of the applicants and the candidates. The last police academy that I taught in, one quarter of that class could not pass the physical fitness test, which is really discouraging. We have two young kids.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I don't know what the answer is there, but, or maybe I do, but...
Elon Musk making robots here.
They have to be able to do a push-up.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all I have for new business and old business.
We didn't miss.
We didn't?
Yes. We did the minutes, right, Katherine?
Yeah, we did.
Yep. So, I think we have the HBC here.
Yep, and mic's on there.
Mic is on.
Come on up. Alright.
To you.
This is the...
One more time.
Yep.
This is the... Hi.
Hi. So, thanks for having us. We had received a copy of the, the highlighted concerns from the town attorney. And at our last meeting, we went over those things to, to hash out, you know, what we thought and how it seemed to gel. And I think there were some concerns or unclear as to, um, how many of these things were already included in the vagueness of the ordinance. And, and this whole rewrite of the regulations was really an attempt to clarify things, particularly of the approval process, so that applicants would know what are the judging criteria. And so, we kind of wanted to go over those items that were of concern here tonight and just kind of clarify what we thought, where we thought it didn't bump up against the ordinance. And then maybe here where it did according to the attorney. So, I'm going to let actually Jeff speak a little bit. I'm recovering my voice. Lois has lost her voice, so these two can probably...
The spokespeople.
They'll be the spokespeople. But, yeah, I don't know if you want to start with first?
Sure. I, I, I think one of the things that's important is we, when we met with you a year ago, we talked about the, our effort was really to provide some greater clarity on what the ordinance really was trying to do, was trying to accomplish. And we very purposely did not change the ordinance. That's, that's our impression now. If, if town council has a different point of view, we can, we can discuss that, but and I'll give you a very concrete example of that. The first thing, and, and let me just preface this by saying that the purpose of changing the regulation, it's effectively a rule change. It is not an ordinance change. The ordinance is something that can only be done by town meeting, just as a statute only can be done by a legislature. Whereas a commission has the authority, and ours is explicit within the ordinance, is explicit to, to have the right to change or amend the ord, excuse me, the regulation, the rules by which the ordinance is enacted. And, and that's really what we tried to do. We tried to really limit our focus to that specific event. To clarify it so that we all had a better understanding when someone came up for us, what was expected and how were we going to operate. So, that's what we tried to do. In the first instance, what the, what the town council points out is, and this was his memo to you, Kim. Uh, he says that the regulation explains that the criteria that you should use in selecting members. It doesn't specify the criteria. What we said was very clearly, "These are things that you might consider." This isn't a requirement, this isn't mandatory. It is rather an explanation of who should be on the historic district commission. And we said very clearly, "Shall take into consideration the acquaintance, demonstrated interest and ability to understand, appreciate and promote the purpose of the historic district commission. To, to the extent that professions, professionals in the following disciplines are available, the board may or should consider, should make reasonable effort to appoint members." But it never requires, it never requires. So, we're in a bit of a loss as to what town council was trying to, to bring to the floor here.
Yeah, I'd be happy to clarify that for you. Hey, Michael Corney, thanks for having me this evening. Uh, yeah, the qualifications section says, "In determining each member's qualifications, comma, the board of selectmen shall take into consideration that point of his demonstrated interest and ability to understand and appreciate." And then it's the "shall." I mean, you put "may," and that's a "may."
But it shall take into consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah.
"Shall" and "may" are two different words.
Well, it shall take into consideration, but, but it doesn't say that that is, they could, could appoint someone for other reasons, right? It says it shall take into...
You want to be careful, you want to be careful with the word "shall" because it's a command.
It, it is a command, and, and it is "shall take into consideration." Doesn't say "shall, shall use these." It says "shall take into consideration."
And in here, it says "should make a reasonable..."
You define, uh, removing "shall" and putting "may" then.
It, we can put "may" in, but it's "take into consideration" was the choice of the word.
Basically, what we were trying to do is, is clarify and open up in the ordinance under historic district commission, uh, section A, it just is very generic, "Commission shall consist of five members." And what we were trying to do is promote the idea that you don't necessarily have to be a historic preservation nut, that there are lots of disciplines that could contribute, whether it's planning, architecture, finance, there's all kinds of other types. And, and so we're trying to make that more of a, not a directive, because then it would be "shall."
Oh, and that's what this indicates.
But, but this is included in the guidelines again, it's not in the ordinance. So it doesn't come to any, there's no expectation of enforcement, if you will, on the part of the board of selectmen. So we, we consider it as part of the guidelines, merely a directive in the sense of we're open to all types of other interests other than just history or historic preservation or architecture.
It's aspirational.
There you go.
It's aspirational, it's not directed.
Well, the word "shall" means...
Bringing up the command, not the problem, but additionally, the last sentence says at least one of the members should be a resident in a historic district. Is that required in the, uh, ordinance?
No, no.
No?
The, the ordinance does not require that.
Correct, so...
So that, there's an argument there that, that that's a somewhat of a change, if you will, if you're going to require that in the sense of absolutely there has to be.
Admittedly, you use the word "should," so that has, I guess, is not as strong as "shall," but again, when you look at the tacitality of qualification, it seems like the historic district is telling the selectman what to do. Uh, whereas, uh, really shouldn't be telling the selectman how, how to appoint, uh, its members. The selectmen have that authority under the zoning warrants, and if you want to change um, the appointment of the, the members, you just go ahead and amend the, uh, the ordinance and we can look into statutes and see if that's applicable. But that, that's what I was getting at, um, is that, you know, obviously, language is important. And if someone reading this from out of town, who doesn't go to your meetings, might wonder if there's, you know, more to this than simply it's just a guideline or aspirational.
Yeah. It, it, it is, it is intended to clarify, and that's in, because what we've run into on several occasions is that the lack of specificity and the lack of clarity uh, within the ordinance, the existing ordinance, simply resulted in confusion and, and a perceived inability on our part to, to be effective. So i- if, 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 if we can change item thirteen, three, D., to say "The board of selectmen may take into consideration," that's fine. That's not, not at issue. Uh, again, the last sentence, the last full sentence of that section, i- is permissive. It says "should be a resident." Doesn't say it has to be.
In five years though, when the selectmen's making its decision, in ten years or fifty years, um, I don't want there to be confusion with the historic district commission saying, "Hey, you had to consider this applicant, or you didn't do that." Then the selectman will have to state that you don't have the powers to amend this zoning warrants by promulgating regulations. So I'm looking more to the future. I mean, you people, um, have a good idea of of the roles and responsibilities of the, the different commissions and boards in town. Um, but I'm looking more to the future, you know, what ambiguity, uh, that would what would take part.
We, as we, again, as we went through this, item for item, um, throughout, our sole goal was not to impose or to alter the ordinance, but rather to clarify it so that it was, again, everybody had a reasonable expectation coming before the board or the commission. Well, I guess...
Sure, my analysis was trying to explain to you, if you go ahead and promulgate these rules and regulations, they could be overturned or they could not be followed by, uh, the selectmen um, because they are outside the scope of the powers. I'm, I'm only trying to protect the commission here in the town. And we, we can certainly get into the other regulations. But what I don't want to have to happen is that you guys appoint or promulgate these regulations or rules and don't go to town meeting. Then you have an applicant for you, and you go ahead and you, you assess everything, you spend all your time at the meeting, issue a great decision, you spend a lot, hours, hours on it. And then we get in court and it's overturned because it really should have just gone to town meeting because it's, it's, it's an amendment of the zoning warrants. And I'm, I'm sorry if I spoke over you, I apologize.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Well, a- again, as, as we went through our entire effort was to look, originally, we had looked at it at a wholesale revision and elected not to do that, but rather, again, I'm being redundant, but just to, to, to clarify as much as possible. The one place that I do think there's, there's certainly room for some, some further clarification on our part may be with the maintenance, which, which is on page thirteen. And, and it, it speaks to the need for, this is thirteen, six, A., the need for ongoing maintenance so things don't become so decrepit, so decrepit that they are indeed then required to be demolished. And, and that we can certainly revisit. But the, the, the balance, as we looked at, you're highlighting in comments, we thought was discretionary or clarifying, and not an amendment or revision of the ordinance, but rather within the rulemaking regulatory authority of the commission.
In other words, in this specific case, that hold maintenance demolition and relocation is granted in the ordinance under the powers and duties erection, alteration, repair, removal, relocation or demolition of a building, et cetera. So again, in my reading of it, there's the power. But where's the clarity? What's the process for demolition? What's the process for holding somebody in an attempt to curtail demolition by neglect, which is what most towns are doing with this, this maintenance part of it? If the board has been given the authority to regulate demolition, then doesn't that give it the rulemaking authority to explain how that regulation occurs?
Yeah, and I think you're right. I mean, the zoning warrants does give the HBC certain, uh, ability to promulgate rules, but also requires you to prepare amendments to the zoning warrant. Meaning that if you're going to change this, this, uh, HCC district in the terms of it, you have to go to a town meeting. So there's a reason why it was written like that, and it does create some ambiguity. When I look at thirteen, two, six, A., um, I look at it from what a court can look at it. And if I'm a property owner and I have this, I'm in the HDC, I'm in that historic district, I'm going to say, "Okay, just don't go to town meeting. You're now requiring me to do all these things." The standard for review of demolition in the U.S. Sector of the Interior Status or Rehabilitation shall be applied." You know, I think that it would be more properly at town meeting, if you approve that at town meeting, fine. There is an argument though that you've over, overstepped your boundaries. Now admittedly, the zoning warrants is quite empty, um, above standards and everything. But I, I see from the courts and the housing appeals board, they are so focused and hypersensitive to property owners' rights and have a notice and making sure all the procedures are, are followed. That's been the focus in the last couple of years. And what I don't want to see is for us to do all our work and then we don't, when we get to court, the first thing the judge says "I'm looking at the zoning warrants, I'm looking, but I have these rules that are, you know, much broader and much more detailed, and this should have gone to town meeting." So, uh, my advice is that it's much safer, it's more, it's, it's more um, consistent with how judges are, are reviewing cases, um, to put this to town meeting. And you know what? Then, when we go to court, the question isn't whether it should have been, um, a zoning amendment or a rule, it's whether it's reasonable. And you, you, you know, I'm sure you got this from another municipality or in your experience or expertise. Um, certainly we can say the U.S. Sector of the Interior Status or Rehabilitation is reasonable and used by all these different towns and has straight standards. Um, and then we win. I'm just, word to the wise, you know, I just, we want to be safe, as safe as we can, because litigation will cost the town, you know, just to get to the Superior Court or the housing appeals board for the decision there is, you know, ten to twenty grand. And if they appeal that to the Supreme Court, you're looking at another ten grand, even more, depending on what kind of law firms on the... on what kind of law firms on the other side. So I, I, I hear you, and you guys are trying to do the right thing by saying we have this zoning warrant, that gives us some powers, but also is very fair to how we execute those powers, and I'm sitting here saying, you really should think about bringing this to town meeting, the highlighted sections, or we, it sounded like you guys had met and you had proposed different language, or thought about making things more discretionary, or have you happy to look at those? But it's the shalls and the, the requirements that I'm worried about, and I wanna make sure the town of Canterbury is as bulletproof as we can get if we have to go to court over this. So that's where I stand, and that's why I, I made the comments I made.
Well, I, and certainly the maintenance issue, you know, that's a, not new, but relatively new way of handling things, but I guess to highlight the relocation and the demolition, I'm, I'm confused on that part because it already is in the ordinance, and so, again, how that works is like saying that every time the planning board is going to alter their regulation as to how they oversee the ordinance that they're using, it's gotta go to town meeting, and that's not what the RSA that grants these land use boards, the rulemaking authority, that's the whole purpose, is not to clog things down, no? Something that already occurs in the ordinance. To, to another degree, it's, it's same thing with, I think earlier you highlighted the maintenance of mature trees and vegetation. Again, if you go back to the powers and duties, change or removal of any natural feature within the district, that's a pretty broad nebulous kind of concept to me, and so here's an attempt to say, you wanna cut down some chokeberries? That's not in our purview. You wanna cut down the plane tree out here? That's a little bit different story, because that is part of the fabric of, you know, the historic district, and so in trying to, to parse out, you know, where does the government start to come into play? It's all rela-, it's all, it's all based upon somebody following the rules anyways, right? I mean, a tree gets cut down before you even know about it, which stuff like that, not necessarily tree cutting, but building and everything else, happens, and so if you don't have something in print, there's nothing to go back to to say, well, wait a minute, you know, you, you didn't come before the board because that is something that has to do with the natural feature of the district. So that's where, you know, again, the, the thought process behind why is that particular, that's page eleven.
And, and again, not trying to beat the dead horse, but, and, and if you look at powers and duties under item eight thirteen two four E, it says very clearly, may adopt and amend regulations and guidelines regarding the procedures for hearing and reviewing applications. And, and that authority is clear in the ordinance, and, and with that authority, we are simply trying to clarify and define, what does it mean when you're taught, when the ordinance says, change or removal of any natural feature within the district? That, I mean, that could be void for vagueness. So we tried, in our frankly best efforts, to say what that really means, as we look at grading or excavation of any site, which is taken right from the ordinance, change and removal of the features, and then we tried to specify including trees and natural vegetation within the district, not including removal of invasive species. Again, to clarify, and, and that goes to the whole issue of, of, you know, what did they mean, what did the ordinance mean when it talks about change or removal of any natural feature within the district?
Yeah, you, you're right, it, it is vague, certainly, and I think to town meeting is the, the best option to get these details set out. I, I just, if you go this route, you, you're, you're now entering a, an argument that you don't have these powers, and all your work could be for naught. It seems like you spent a lot of time on these regulations and a zoning warrant amendment would protect the town better for this. Getting back to, for instance, thirteen specs C, that good cause standard, have you, let me ask you this, do you have, how many applications do you have before you right now?
None.
When's the last time you had an application before you?
Last month.
Correct. How did that go?
Great, fine. I mean, it went, it went through, because everybody understood the need to be there, and, and the request, and understood the guidelines that we operate under, and it was a, a very relatively short meeting for, for the approval. The one that was most difficult.
What were they trying, what were they trying to do?
Well, can, if we're on thirteen point six and you're looking for an example of what we were trying to avoid, we had a five-year-long demolition problem in the very center of town with a barn, and so I, I guess of the, the three items in this section, to me, C is probably the most pertinent and most important, because to me, we already have the authority, and what we're trying to do was clarify the steps and processes by which we can hold somebody accountable in the future, which we did not have. The approval process that we went through was either A ignored or delayed to the point where there was no salvage of the barn, so basically demolition by neglect, and it became actually a life safety issue where the town had to basically condemn the building. Am I not saying that correctly?
The state statutes.
So that's something we.
The state statutes allow you to deal with, the state statutes allow you to deal with, you know, ours they one fifty-five B, you know, emergency or dilapidated buildings, that, that, that provided whether you have one of these ordinances or not, or rules and regulations, that's all, that's all taken care of.
That's different than having a preservation ordinance, which is there to, to get things so they don't get to that point, right? And that's the whole point of having a historic district commission or, you know, a heritage commission, that's why the state developed those, those ideas. So in this case, the inability to hold an applicant to a particular demolition process is, is not resulting in any preservation. We don't even have the timbers left from that, because you couldn't enforce the way it was taken down, and we had a structure that was left open to the public, you know, for literally years, so nothing good came out of that, nobody wanted that whole thing.
And, and, and.
I do remember that, but you, you still have the town meeting that can, can adopt it as an amendment, I mean, it's, just 'cause you guys promulgated rules and regulations doesn't mean the town meeting couldn't do it with an amendment.
Item, it.
Yeah.
Certainly the town meeting could do it, the question is, what is the purpose of item thirteen two four D E if it says we can adopt and amend regulations and guidelines regarding the procedures? I mean, if, if everything.
And I'm sort of wondering, what, what's the purpose of preparing amendments to the ordinance?
No, you can either amend the ordinance or you can prepare regulations, correct?
No.
Oh, I don't think it gave, I don't think it said you can amend this ordinance.
No, 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 no. That, I mean, if you amend the ordinance, that requires a vote of town meeting. If, if you were going to promulgate regulations and guidelines, that's something the commission can do after public, notice and public hearing.
I wouldn't take that wrong in interpretation of the HDC's power, which is the reason why I said amend the zoning warrants, I think under, under state law, if you wanna amend the zoning warrants, you gotta go to town meeting.
Yes.
Right, we agree with that.
We agree with that.
We absolutely agree with that.
We're saying is, is the state already grants you, and I wish I could, the RSA six seven something, that gives these boards and commissions the ability to, to con- conceive their own regulations in order to, to fulfill the ordinance, and so.
And I'm saying, there's a point that the state statute, there's a certain point that they allow you to go up to, and when you cross that point, which is not a clear line, I, I, I admit that, it's not a clear line, but when you start these, you know, we talked about the maintenance issue when I read that, you know, that seemed to be more than just a rule or a regulation, but you're, you're telling that a property owner, these are, this is what you have to do, if you don't do it, you're in violation, you'll, you could be subject to six seventy-six seventeen fines and penalties. And I, the way the courts view these things, is they look with a fine-tooth comb at the ordinance and your regulations. Remember, the courts are dealing with criminal cases, you know, medical malpractice, jury cases all day, I don't think they're gonna find, you know, look at the fine distinction between what our purpose is and the regulations, the barn that's falling down and the need to get people in line with many of the zoning warrants. I think they're gonna look at property, right, and say, it should've been at town meeting or striking all of this. It's great that you guys had a, a good meeting, the last meeting, and you know what? It sounds like I, I assume the residents of Canterbury are very good with zoning and you have good participation, so this may be a lot of what I see in other towns about there's an animosity or always litigation brought, challenging town regulations and the zoning warrants, and I'm looking at through that lens. So, you know, I, I don't mean to keep beating this dead horse, but again, this, this is the highlighted sections I have a little concern with, you may wanna think about bringing it to town meeting, 'cause that would be safe. Do we think any of these rules or regulations would be, you know, controversial at town meeting? I don't, I'm not, maybe that's a political question, the one you don't have to answer, we don't know, but seems like you'd be able to get up at town meeting and explain the reason why you need these, and the barn is, therefore, I, I remember the barn when I went there a couple of years ago.
No, I, I understand, I understand the, where you're coming from, for lack of a better word, but I, I guess the thing is, is much like, you know, we changed the rule to allow solar arrays, we changed it allowed to allow satellite dishes, why wasn't that something that had to go before the town? I mean, those are fairly significant, do you think it should've?
I don't.
Really? Okay. I think of it as, as if you, if you have an ordinance that gives you oversight of an external feature in a historic district, that, and then says you can make up the rules and regulations within that district by this process, which includes public comment and approval, then I think that's the way it works, so like, that's how I see it, you know?
So just, just to clarify, you exempted solar from these, from regulations you promulgated in the past, so originally?
And when I first came on the board, there were no solar arrays, I don't even think there were satellite dishes allowed. You know, but with changing times, you know, boards should be reflective of the towns, and, you know, there are enough people that were looking for technology that didn't exist when the rules were made, whenever they were made before, to update the rules. You know, that's not like saying I'm mending everybody to have a solar array in the historic district or.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'd go challenge that, what you promulgated, because if you're letting people do something, and when you're restricting people, that's where the, the possibility of litigation or dispute arises, and that's why I look at these regulations, I say, well, we may have a problem, if we go, we have to go to court over it, I hope not.
Just, just to, just to clarify, the, the, the items that you highlighted in your review of this document, are those the issues that you think need to go to town meeting, or are there more than that?
I believe my email clarified that those are the ones you should think about bringing at town meeting. Did you say that you met recently and you, yeah, got new regulations or you thought about changing around stuff?
We've gone through the public comment process, we've not had a final vote on rulemaking changes, because we were interested in, you know, the Board of Selectmen, town attorney's opinion, and also, it was, you know, there's backroom stuff as to how some of the processes will happen, can the code enforcement officer have the time to do some of the things that we were looking for? So we have not approved this in any way, but we are at that point, and this was the final part of it, was to, to clear through the, the select board.
Yeah, I, I think we're already on over, town meeting's gonna come up soon enough, and I, I really do encourage you to, you know, think about putting this on, on the warrant.
Curious to hear from the select board.
I was talking to somebody last weekend, and they were curious what Canterbury zoning around solar is, and I don't think we've got anything in it as I think about it, I don't think we've said anything on any page that you have to meet a certain minimum, or they can't be located here, or any of those type of things. What other people feel about that? I mean, that's, that's the one thing that, that I've heard out of this so far, that gives me pause. I mean, I think they wanted me to come in and, you know, somehow lead a charge to man's solar, or, you know, make it fit some criteria.
I mean, the regulation was full of things like, you know, requiring true divided light windows, which in this day and age are not particularly energy efficient, there are alternatives, and so we have allowed that as part of our decision-making process. We're, you know, there's part of the guidelines from the old days that require you not to have a cement foundation exposed more than eight inches, and in the past, we've made people either granite face or brick face above that elevation. You know, there's lots of, go on and on with asphalt and walkways and whatnot, these are not uncommon requirements in historic districts, so my assumption is, is that most towns have gone through this similar process as far as legitimacy, and I get that each town has the right to vote up and down its own ordinances, don't get me wrong, I understand that, but I'm just saying that, I don't think that in those towns, every time they decided whether a certain style of fence or a certain paving material was allowed or not allowed, that they put it up to a town ordinance, so, right? As long as it's allowed to be covered by the commission within the ordinance itself, tells us we cannot have anything to do with paint color, so we would never go anywhere looking to restrict certain types of colors or certain types of paint, because it clearly says, don't go there, you have no authority. These other things, it appears, it, it says we have authority, and that's why we went there, to make it clear, so anyways.
It's a quiet room.
Yeah, I mean, I, there is our town attorney, I think we should follow his advice.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, we will thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You talked about Comcast earlier on the way.
Yes. That's okay.
Are you aware of the Phidium lines that are being run through town?
Comcast has, uh, said that they, they are streaming to Caitlin.
Comcast is?
Comcast is.
I heard Phidium is considering running there. I heard Fidium is considering running their fiber optic.
I haven't heard that. I haven't heard that either.
And from what I saw on the website, you can pre-sign up. And when they come through, they will hook your house, they will run the fiber to the house at no cost, whether you take the service or not. Just curious how...
And we've heard nothing, because that's consolidated.
Right, fiber optic.
Yeah, and we've heard nothing, that I'm aware of.
Consolidated...
The ones with the horrid landlines, yeah.
Yeah.
Called me the other day and wanted the select board to sign on with them on an application for BMGI funding that's coming up. But the selectmen had already signed the week previous to Comcast. So you can only allow one, there's only one application.
One application for the money.
Yeah.
But you could open the town up.
Well, the town is already open.
It is.
The town, there's no contract, they, there's no contract.
It's a contract, like, it's been out there for a million years, right? So I guess that, you know, when talking to Comcast, they say, you know, these other guys along the string, I get, and it's not like they're using their existing landline. They're running new fiber optic, then from the pole to your house.
Yeah, I hadn't heard of Fidium was doing that. We've heard of Co-op, haven't we? Possibly Intermail.
Co-op, that's not gonna happen.
Oh, nothing.
They decided not to.
Yeah, they said that they were not going to stay on with...
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
They had gotten a grant previously, and they did a couple of big jobs in the northern part of the state with communities that didn't have any service at all.
And it all.
Consolidated got an award for some grant money earlier this year, but it was for other parts, the western part of the state. So the only thing that we've heard is from Comcast that they've applied twice and have not gotten grants, and were applying to a third one for some BMGI money.
Yeah, I found it curious, Loudon has some fiber optic in it already, at this point.
Yeah, I talked with Central Hampshire Planning a couple of weeks ago. Loudon had worked with Mission Broadband, who's a consulting company. The selectmen had hired them, so they're getting us new FCC maps and some other things.
All right, just, I saw that.
Yeah, thanks, buddy.
Have a good night, thanks.
You too.
Hey, ladies.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome. You have a good night, I'm gonna make some cupcakes.
All right.
I guess the biggest thing that irritated me reading the whole thing is that they were more or less telling us, you shall, shall and may. I learned a long time ago, were two words, you gotta be careful how you use it.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm not willing to disregard our attorneys.
No, absolutely not.
That's why we pay them.
And I was, I was happy with what he said with shall and may, because...
That's all we have on the agenda, unless you have something else.
Do you want any further?
I have nothing else.
Want to make a motion?
Uh, make a motion, go home.
Go home.
Make up a G and T or adult beverages that Lois refers to.
Too intense, so you're not going to the energy...
Oh, that's right, I gotta go to a...